Hi Michelle, I just wanna remind you you're muted.
I got.
Alright, absolutely. Oh, you're on a camera. Y'all ready?
No, that's a very good.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, okay. Alright, so it is Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty five. It is six thirty P M. I'm calling this laws and rules meeting to order. Uh, Michael Oliver and Tierney sitting in for all of them ready scotch holes. Uh, first thing on the agenda is length of building permits.
Okay, so the length of a building project is twelve months.
Twelve inches.
Twelve months flat. Now if you're like me, you might think, as I did, that there's this reason for that and that everyone else also has twelve months. It turns out that's not the case. There's no particular reason why the building permit as given out by the building department is twelve months. And also we are an outlier. Uh, many of our peers in the region have a two-year uh permit timeline. Um, if you are remodeling your kitchen or putting in your uh your roof, a twelve-month uh permit timeline makes sense. Uh, where the reason why I'm here for setting this um where it is problematic is if you have a larger multifamily development. And we know from the very beginning that a twelve-month permit isn't going to do it. There's no way you could build a hundred units in twelve months. It doesn't happen. Um, and so the uh what I propose is that the length of a building permit uh for any any commercial project over ten thousand square feet be increased to eighteen months.
Mm-hmm.
Plus option for six month ex- uh extension. So then total that would be twenty four months. Uh, and in that time span, we can imagine a a typical uh multifamily construction project could actually get done. Um, the the process of uh renewal renewing a permit, uh it adds additional administrative paperwork for the developer. And I don't I don't think it's I justify or need it. And it also adds unnecessary administrative paperwork on the city set for projects that they have already presented. So, okay, so uh this is why the building department, although I spoke to them, they support this measure for these projects. And so I'm coming to the council. Uh, it is written in our code that the length of a building permit is twelve months, so this requires a local law change. So that is what is before you uh tonight.
Questions?
My question. How many um of these developments that have been proposed or are ongoing or recently constructed now have to come back for either extension or?
Yeah, so the uh so it would be a current system, it would be a new permit. Right, so the two most recent projects that this happened under um Golden Hill and the Girl Factory are are probably the two most recent ones that dealing with this or had.
But why eighteen months, one and two years? Why not two and a half years?
Uh, they have to set somewhere. Um, I mean, it basically the eighteen months plus six months, it it's going to equal twenty four months, two years for most projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this particular model of the eighteen plus six uh and plus the threshold of ten thousand square feet was one I is it is loosely modeled after um a system they have in Peekskill. Um, which I think is is reasonable. Um, so, I mean, yeah, but why why anything, right? But but I think it the the general in general other municipalities um with the exception of the city of Newburgh, which is a true outlier, have a two-year permitting timeline. Um.
Newburgh has?
Uh, Newburgh six months.
Oh. Now that I'm saying Newburgh.
And why is it a new permit after the after it expires, one and?
Uh, it's it's a well, it technically is a renewal, but you still need to submit all the original paperwork.
Really?
Insurance that you had originally. The technically is a renewal, but it's not like a pressable button. You're gathering all that paperwork again. Uh, and you're also paying the portion of the fee again.
Right, that that was gonna be my question. So what what is the fee for the initial permit?
I can tell you. So uh we charge for commercial projects, we charge per square foot. It's seventy cents per square.
Seventy cents?
Mm-hmm.
And how does that compare with other municipalities?
It's about average.
Yeah, which would be the high.
So, um, I'm gonna so uh one challenge with this is that the the metric by which um the the way we charge is different. Uh, so sometimes we uh municipalities charge by square foot like we do. Other municipalities charge per per cost of construction.
Oh.
So for instance, the city of Newburgh charges seventeen dollars per thousand per one thousand.
Thousand dollars of construction dollars.
Every two months.
Yes, um. And which is uh honestly, the there's no one listening from the city of Newburgh tonight, I presume, but astronomical. These costs. Um, in city, so we charge seventy cents per square foot, particularly charges seventy five cents per square.
So this may force to.
Yeah, we're I'd say we're about average, possibly slightly below average, right? If if there is and uh a need to increase revenue here, right? I think it's better to change the fee schedule to increase this cost.
Right.
Rather than make everyone do this permanent renewal, this whole dance like that. You know, every such and such month, right? But in general, where our permitting costs, I feel good about them, they're they're average. I think they're right for additionally. This point.
And what are some of the other cities that you looked at just to?
Yeah, so uh Beacon um so also charges seventy cents per square foot, which is exactly charge. Except that they also charge an additional fifty dollars per unit.
Fifty dollars per unit?
Yes. Um, I mentioned that the city of Newburgh charges seventeen dollars per one thousand construction costs. For comparison, Hudson charges five. Uh, yes, yes. Per one thousand.
Construction.
Um, and the the city of Beacon um charges twenty one seventy five per one thousand construction costs. Again, quite high.
Yeah, that's very high.
They're, you know, southern westerners, so perhaps.
There are a lot of people with money wanting to do that, right?
Well, for the whole new buildings coming up there.
But a lot of them.
She was.
Uh, Michael had his hand up.
Uh, so in section two, where you define what commencement of construction means, uh, which I appreciate when you're talking of, but it says, you know, what it is doing on a daily or regular basis, a regular basis.
Um, like does that? I would say on some regular.
I mean, it's pretty hilarious. Every four months I come and dig a new hole.
Mm-hmm. But digging holes, yeah.
counts. Oh, it does. It says excavation.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what is it saying?
Uh, so so I'll just read the whole definition. So commencement of construction, the initiation of substantial onsite construction activity authorized by a building permit, including but not limited to excavation for foundations or footings, installation of support structures or other work integrals to improve construction plans, and continuing on a daily or regular basis until completion that excludes site investigations, fence installation, job trailer, storage, container placement, delivery of construction equipment and materials, existing building cleanouts, and vegetation clearing. So just the word regular to me is seems like it could be very long.
I wanna ask a question before we all got to ask questions again. Okay. So anyone that would be issued, so should we change this and anyone that is currently holding a twelve-month permit, is that there to be still have a twelve-month permit or how's that gonna work? Will that go over to?
Well. I think it would depend on which projects over ten thousand square feet have an active permit. Which is probably quite low, but it might be more.
Okay.
Um, so I would I will have to review and try something on how we treat that case. Um, you know, they were given, there was given originally a twelve-month permit, so my view, they don't quite follow their this. Reason I would have to check with our council.
Okay. Okay, I was.
Well, I just my my question is, this is a small number. Well, I just, my, my question is, this is a small number of projects that you're worrying about each. Two, for example, are right now ongoing, okay?
Only a ten thousand is there.
Right, but, okay, so it won't affect. About renovations.
No.
So that would seem to favor the larger developer as opposed to someone that, you know, a. Small business owner that would like to come in and either construct, you know, a, a place, so. Is, is there any, um. Leeway for the ten thousand square? Could we drop it to five thousand perhaps? Because one, it's so funny, because I'm way over. I was listening to the radio and they were talking about just the, the obstacles that small. Developer is uh running to, and it makes them sort of walk away from, you know, from projects. And so, uh, so I'm just wondering, if we could not lower that square footage.
I mean, we could, um. What, how are you defining? Because the thinking was that projects that are smaller than ten thousand squi- square feet. Might be able to finish, to be finished in a twelve-month timeframe, right? So it depends, maybe tell me more about the type of project you are thinking about.
So I'm thinking about, um. I know what you're talking about, um. It's um, I'm thinking about a store.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, that, and, and all of them wants to come in and build a restaurant. Um, and for whatever reasons they find into, you know, problems that, you know, buying. I mean, the, uh, you know, lumber, whatever, it's over, it's over. So I'm thinking, but it's not ten thousand square, say it's five thousand. And no one wants to encourage that kind of, um, business as well.
Mm-hmm. Uh. I personally don't have a problem with that, but I, I would, if I were to agree to any change, I would want to check with the building department. Just about any potential unintended consequences of lowering that threshold.
Um, yeah, Terrell, I think brings up a, a really good point. Curious like how long the build-out process is for like even the construction of like an A D U. Um, cause I could foresee that taking over a year, and it seems like going into the next year and. Like construction and get even acquiring materials is taking longer and longer. Um, so I'm kind of two minds about this. I do believe that. We should, the, the city should have more oversight in making them get the extension and apply, but I also see Terrell's point about. Making it a lot easier for, for small business owners and even like somebody wanting an A D U to get that out the door a lot faster.
Sorry, I would just say also, you know, piggybacking on this, I think there is some interest in the city in getting things done and not having projects. Like go on and on, but it, would it be possible to even say for the smaller projects, maybe they could get a six? Maybe they get a year contract, but a six-month extension possibility included in that, so that they can get more time?
Thank you for mentioning that, because in, the language actually does account for that. So, um. In, in what is proposed, so a twelve-month project. Is also eligible for the six-month extension, same way that an eighteen, eighteen-month project. So. That's.
That's.
Both, both can get the six.
Oh, the six months of extension. Without presenting all of the documentation.
Yes, but maybe that accounts for that, you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that. Oh, and I just had another thought, uh, just about the definition. Do we really need to say and continuing on a daily or regular basis, or could you just say and continuing on to a completion?
Sure.
I mean, that seems.
Yeah.
Was that because like if they take a long extended break, it's not really construction, so?
Right, we're, we're, yeah.
Oh, I see.
We don't want just pits.
Yeah, well, yeah, which is sort of like why we wanted to limit.
Well, I'm just gonna suggest.
You're really going, you're ready.
I get it.
I was gonna suggest just to add something in there, so I'm sorry about going over. And then you're gonna continue now. And continuing on a daily or regular basis as defined by the planning. You know, so depending on like the size of the project, when they would have to, like, it's daily, it would, you know. May not be realistic, weekly might and monthly might, and then they, they could be determined, I don't know, or building safety, whatever. But like as determined, so each project has it, and I don't know if we could, like, say. Or we could even just say on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. But then that's limiting us to. If I'm saying that it's monthly, I'm just kind of pop-corting here, but I don't like the idea of not having it.
Okay, I see what you're saying. But daily might be, we don't want them to be working.
I don't want your daily.
But we also don't want them working on a daily basis, because that would be working on Sundays and weekends and a lot of other things, which is already causing problems.
Right, we don't want that, but I don't want it to be completely open-ended, because I suppose it could be just a giant hole in there.
And you've seen that before.
Yes, we have.
Where do you get that?
And this is something that you could go back to building safety talk about the five thousand or potential other side, and we could table this and.
I mean, could I, I'm fine with doing that. Can I ask, that, does the fact that they can also. Okay, I'll bring it up. Or have the six-month extension account for some of the research?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, that, that's reasonable. Yeah.
So.
Right off.
Um, the, under the extension, the payment of the applicable fee. Is that like, or just a reapplication fee that's in our fee schedule, or is that paying another seventy cents per?
The extension?
Yeah, the, the extension application.
The extension is not paying the seventy cents.
Okay.
Per square foot. I do think there is something in the fee schedule about sanctions. I believe it is seventy-five dollars.
Okay, that's what I thought. Something very. Be so better.
Okay. So.
Thanks.
I, I.
I, I just want to see if anyone else has any questions.
I guess my only other question was whether the, the next steps would be to retake, trying to find some language to.
Right, so it seems like the concern is the commencement of construction definition?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the concern is the daily or regular basis is being too.
Regular, it's too ambiguous.
It's being too ambiguous.
Do we have that definition like somewhere else? Like I sort of remember us having a similar conversation when we were discussing Form twenty-eight K or something about.
Yeah.
I'll go there. But that was the, um, development period.
Right.
Hmm.
Yeah, I get nervous about, right, you know, you're constructing something and you have, need time to get materials and stuff. I don't want somebody punished for that. That's my fear.
I mean, one thing that we could do, um, I, I wish we had court council on today, but. At the moment, we could just strike the clause and continuing on a daily or regular basis until completion. Or I can go back and workshop that, that clause and come back. Destroy you.
So as part of this process, can we also look at, um, what we're charging?
Well, I did do that a little bit.
Okay.
Um, and, um, I believe, although I don't recall when this happened, but. Um, the, the billing department did mention to me when I presented them with some of these other fees that we started charging. That their, their fees were recently updated. Uh, the billing department's, I don't know when that happened, but that's something that should be, because they're, the billing department. That conversation should be driven by them, uh, rather than by me, like, I can't. Give this up to their department and put it instantly out. Okay.
But since you said that there's only like one possible project right now. Maybe if I just table this and get all that.
Okay.
The legal language, check on, maybe, you know, with the building department about their fees.
Okay.
I know.
But it does seem very, it seems very reasonable. To extend that period, so. And thanks for doing the research, it's helpful to see how other municipalities are charging. I think they're really making.
Okay, is it a bit of a black sharpie?
Oh, black, no.
At home?
Not at home. They attempted to redact something.
Did you read it?
Oh, yeah, easily.
Okay.
So. It's actually giving us.
Then we'll see.
Mostly that is how they're going to redact things.
Do you want to switch order? Yeah, so we're gonna, um, go, uh, item number two, we're gonna go with code changes.
So I'm going to be presenting the code changes, um. And the plan, Michelle and I talked about it, and when I talked to Barbara about it, is that I will just. On a regular basis, bring forward code changes. Some of them will be. You know, just cleaning up, others will have to be decisions, and others maybe like what I did with the ethics. Portion of it and how the committee, so, um, hopefully in the next two years and one month. Of my service, we'll have the code all cleaned up for the next group of people. Um, so Barbara did send us the list, or put it in as a communication, a list of, of some items. I started working through the first four, and I know Michelle's working on chapter three ninety. Uh, so the first two are easy and we can get that done tonight, because it basically just tackles, but. We have to, like, go through the motion and actually fix it. Uh, but the issues that I do want to talk about, because I have a rough draft with it, but I really need decisions from the committee. So the first one is just reading the, it says keep following, it says repeal of enactments not included in code, keep following. Then we would just take away the keep following, be there. The second line, is there's supplementations in there, and it should not read that, the title should. Dale of code book, that's it. All right, so it's just taking out in the title some erroneous language. So those are easy. The third one is about the planning board. And this is a conversation that is a year ago.
Yeah, right.
That we.
Result.
But that was never resolved, so that we think that it should be resolved one way or the other. Um, so I have language that I would still have to change a little bit about, um. Having a renter on the board. I mean, that is personally, I did that because it, it's the way that it's different, but I actually do favor that, in my opinion. And I, I favor having a, a renter, but we really have a personal patron at the hall, and I'm on board with that, and also figure out how like exactly that will work. So. Basically, if everybody is saying you don't, it doesn't matter if you have it, and you don't want it to be a requirement, then we don't change it. If you want it to be a requirement, then you have to change something. So I'm, I, yeah, so. I don't know, I can't remember the conversation and some of the questions that came up, because that might have been at the right time where I disappeared for a little bit.
Sure.
I think we had settled more on it being a requirement, that the company went there.
But we also, the concern was if we didn't have a renter, and there were no renter that wanted to be on the board or pay out of clients.
That was.
That would be.
Or would it just be a vacancy on the brand?
It would be a vacancy, and this wouldn't be, this would only actually take effect when somebody's turned up. Because nobody's serving specific roles, and you can't kick somebody off because they're out of a new compliance. It would be whenever, you know, Michael Tierney's position on the planning board expires. That would need to be filled by somebody who fits the new criteria, so it wouldn't be kicking anybody off.
Oh, the current board.
Of the current board, it would just be, we're making a new requirement for a new question. How would a board manage to select?
The mayor.
Okay, so the mayor takes recommendations everywhere and makes a selection. I would favor. Encouraging the mayor to make sure he selects a tenant instead of tying his hands. If we tie his hands with the requirement, and there's nobody coming forward, or there's no, you know, we could end up with a problem. I think if we encourage the mayor, whoever that one be, to make sure that there is a tenant on the board. You know.
And I don't like that idea. Because it's been a long day, so I'm just gonna come out and say it, um, because, and again, nothing to the current mayor, but I just. I personally don't like how the, our boards and commissions are appointed by the mayor, so that's that issue, which, yes, that's hopefully will be resolved in a couple of years.
Right.
Um, but I just don't, like, I, I really think it's important to have. A renter on board, and I don't want to put it in, like, if the council feels it, but the council will take steps. Because there's probably another, like, I hear your concerns, and how if you can't find somebody, but there could. There could be a different solution that's in more our control by writing the code versus just saying, well, we hope whoever's in office. Is going to do it, so.
I know, I agree. I think I agree with you that it's important that we have that on board. Um, and I don't feel strongly about it either way, so if it was my code, it would bother me.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, also, there are alternates on the planning board too.
Hmm.
So potentially there could be an alternative as a tenant, so that let's say the tenant person leaves and moves out of town. You know, there would be somebody who could fill in, or it could just be any alternate during a short, a short time period, I don't know. I'm just brain, brainstorming here.
I honestly don't think we have to worry about tenants not showing up after what we've seen. In the city and the forty-seven percent of population. Who is, as I just said, and they have shown up, and I, I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I, I think it is important, and I think, you know, we've been heard from a legislator who spoke about how becoming a tenant sort of radically changed his. Perspective on a whole host of issues, though. And it does feel like, I've been watching most planning board meetings, and I've presented in front of the planning board. It seems like there is a consensus and a sort of uniform in, uniformity in a lot of their thinking, that I think the diversity in. Class frankly is, is a little, um, it's important, um. I think that, I, I think that it would. Make the board a, a lot more dynamic, you know? Not that there's, not that it's not dynamic, but it does feel like there's a historical homogeneity.
And I would agree with that, as someone who goes to every meeting.
And, but I do think that we don't want, um, maybe I'm misconstruing, but we don't, I don't, would be against just making a tenant an alternate. Like, I do think if we have.
No, no, I wasn't saying, yeah, I was saying an alternate could be a tenant.
Okay.
Because there are always, there are two alternates.
Yeah.
On the planning board.
Well, I think there should be a, if that's the case, there probably should be a tenant position on the board and a tenant alternate.
That's what I was testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that what people are agreeing with, kind of on the board and ten, and, or renter on the board and a renter. That language that we'll use.
Right.
Um, renter on board and as alternate.
That would be at least one.
Yeah, and I, just so you know, it also says which the board may consist of two members who may be officials of the city of Kingston. So that's something that we've changed. I don't know, Michelle thought this before you, because it was, it, they had to be.
Oh.
We, it used to be, yeah, um, because it was a C P W, the administrative assistant before Maureen. She served it and somebody else, can't remember, but they were actually on the board, so now we've changed it to may consist of two members. I don't see the, like, well, it's, you know, like, okay, you can do it, you cannot do it, like, why is it in here?
I mean, why should city officials be voting over some of the board at all?
So that's a good question.
I mean, that's always felt when we took away the shall, it was a.
Right, why must, I think.
Like, I think a planning board is always gonna be a board that folks want to be on. It's not one that we have a dearth of appointments or interests. Um, it says it's an exciting board, it's interesting, and it's, and it's, it's always.
Something.
Oh, it's always something, and you can see the process. It's always, and it's a decision-making body. I think, you know, having a, having Sarah serve as our liaison gives us sort of, oh. Tenu- not tenuous, but a, an informal way in on the process. That for like us or a city employee to actually like have a vote at the meeting, I think is a little too centralizing.
You're not putting anybody off?
Right now, no, and I don't know if that's ever been the case.
I don't know, I don't think so.
I mean, again, when I first took office, there were, this law, the code did say that it was a shall rule, not a may rule. Uh, so there were till. No, but, yeah, I'm just, I, I feel like this is extra language that's just not really needed, because. We're not, we're not saying we, they can't be a city. we're not, we're not saying they can't be a city official. I mean, sorry, it can't be a city official. I mean, unless you guys want to say that, but if you take out the language, it still can be.
Yeah.
It's just not maybe putting it in the minds as much.
Do we have a list of like when the vacancies come due, or?
Yes.
Oh, it may be someplace, maybe on the website. I personally don't know. I think that ethics board, there, you can see when there's, it's up, but not on the planning board.
I don't know.
This is your turn.
So I could write something up that includes the language of the renter, adding that in, and then bring it back next month, and then we could tweak it. Um, but you're all on board with the also eliminating the city officials too. Well, not a requirement, so I'm just gonna eliminate it because it's not prohibitive.
I see this up with.
So you would rather prohibit that?
Um yeah.
Really? I, I personally think that the city, city employees and elected officials shouldn't um, sort of.
Especially given that they're employed. And they're taking government actions, I know.
Yeah, and, and I guess one of my questions would be if, if somebody is an employee of City Hall, and they have to go to a planning board meeting, which could go until ten o'clock at night, are they getting paid for that time? And now they're
Because they're outside, that's another question.
Now they're getting paid to the
But I, because if, if somebody on the city staff who's not a department, like, this department
Then you are being, and you are being pointed because you are a member of the city staff. I would think if I was that person, I would be entitled to telling those helpers. Does the city engineer?
No.
Well, he shows up at most meetings just because the engineer has
But his department has
Right, and he doesn't have No, he doesn't have a, no.
But he has a huge influence.
Yes, so isn't
Right. You know, for an asshole, they're gonna have a big influence. Just being an official, especially, you know, engineer and a lawyer, they're gonna have a big influence without having a
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so that I will, I'll have it on my computer so we can tweak it. But this gives me a start, and then I can have court counsel look at it too, give something, so that's the third. And the fourth one?
I just, I just, one second, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, the planning board, even the names of people, I don't see it on it's not here. It would be really great to have their names, how long, you know, when they're ten years up, or how long they've been on, and things like that.
That would be good for every board, the commission to have the same, have that standardized, so that we know who the people are and what their terms are.
What about
Excuse me. Oh, wait. I just wanted to let you know that it actually is on the website.
Yeah, it's in somewhere.
Yeah, there's a page that says, uh, boards and commissions, and it is updated regularly.
Okay.
With the expiration, that sounds horrible. That is, with the expiration dates too, Lisa?
I believe so. I'm gonna check right now.
Yeah, I know I've seen it for ethics, I just wasn't sure if that was just specific to theirs, but
It has the applications, the name of the board, and then if you go to the planning board, click on that, it just takes you back to the planning department.
Maybe this is something that's gonna change with the that we've heard so much about.
Yeah, I don't think we're seeing it. Elisa, have you filed that information?
Yeah, there's a page that says neither the boards and commissions, but there are just links then to those
To those pages, which, that's right.
It doesn't have additional.
I have the spreadsheet at home, at, I was gonna say at home. I have it in my office. I can send it to you all tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
Thank you. So are you guys good with that? I'll bring her back.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and then the other one I started and needed guidance before I write anything is the fourth one which is following labor. Yeah, so it's the one So I could read that to you, because it's not
Text contains multiple errors of missing data, is that the one?
Yeah, so this is, any person who violates any provision of this article, or any term, condition, or provision, any building permits, certificate of occupancy, certificate of compliance, temporary certificates, stop work order, operating permit, or other notice of order issued by the code enforcement officer pursuant to any provision of this local law, shall be punished by a fine blank and/or imprisonment not exceeding blank. So we need to determine what that fine is. And what the imprisonment is if we shall want to go that far.
Yeah.
I wanna say also that what we just spoke with our thing about is also chapter one seventy-two, so we should, should we get it all done together so we don't amend it?
Have to go back again.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, thank you for noticing that, so. And then hopefully we can get this fixed. I think this is the only one on that list, but I maybe I'll go through
after one sentence.
I'm just going through bar verses, because then my plan was to, like, take each chapter at a time. Right, but I wanted to get her stuff done, so. Not her stuff, but the stuff that she recommends. Um so we, you know, I'm going so any questions? I mean, I have picked numbers. I, for imprisonment, I wrote not exceeding ten days. I also just don't really like the idea of imprisonment.
Sometimes, I don't think we get, uh, us, take a selfie.
Well, I think
The fine should, the fine should be significant. That won't, it costs us, that's gonna cost us a lot of money if it's worth.
But can a stop work order be a log of fine, in lieu of a stop work order, be a log of fine, say then annoys what, um why
A building permit, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
But I would imagine so. I don't think why not?
So can we come up with sort of a schedule of a places, fines associated with it?
We can do whatever we want.
But we can, which is arbitrary.
Right, okay, thank you, yes. I mean, it does, there had to be, yeah, reasons, but I mean, as long as we do that, yes, we could split it up however we, we want, um.
Like more minor offenses.
And we could also do because this seems like it's just a one-term, like a once time.
Right.
Do we want to do it, okay, we have second stop or quarter?
Just like we've done with other fees.
Right, this way, when you, when it's somebody who just truly makes a mistake, they just don't know, whatever.
Right.
We're not faulting them, but there are people that we may be thinking of the same, that, you know, might be the fine version, and we're just doing it because they
Sequested business.
It's cheaper.
The cost of business, it's cheaper to just pay the fine because they have the money. Then, like, I would, I kind of like have the
Goes to jail.
Accelerating.
What is that?
That goes to jail.
Well, that's what I, you know, that's, like
I can think of, right?
That's why imprisonment doesn't sound completely
Sounds completely crazy.
Crazy, well. But I also, like
These are not violent criminal offenses, which would automatically want somebody in jail.
But, right, right. I, I, I get okay with, I think we should say imprisonment now. I just didn't want to take it out without like, just me deciding to take it out without a conversation, and I just put ten this as a block, as a, um something to put there. Thirty definitely felt too long in the day. Like, you're wiping that off, I don't know, never
Really, that's good, that's tough.
Yeah, right. Um so
Yes, so the eastbound, those four?
Yeah, so if you have any suggestions besides splitting stuff up, doing the stacked, the tiered payments?
Right. And we probably want to look at our current fee schedule to see what, see if it sort of seems like a comparable.
It's not on the fee schedule.
No, I know it's not. Oh, because it's a fine, right.
So
I remember we see what other committees are doing too, so that we can get some guidance here.
So separates two tiers.
Yes.
Tier pay, or tier fines.
Mm-hmm.
And then no jail. Even if it really, have not just one incident.
So today, if I, if I start work, I'm gonna stop work order, I'm telling it, I'm gonna stick around my door. And that's it, right?
Well, and you also have to stop working to do not, or making, you know, so I think there is some, there's some consequences to it because you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing for your client, and whatever your client is.
Right.
Which, you know, I guess it depends on who your client is, so there's only consequences. So I don't, I don't even know where to start in terms of numbers. I also don't really know, like, stop work, like, what your opinion are, what would be the greater violation, in your opinion? Violating a building permit, violating a stop work order? Is the greatest of all?
Well, the stop work problem is, is when
Where do you got my building permit? I know what I'm gonna do.
It could be, alright, working in a, in a, in a jurisdiction.
But by not having a building permit, you can do the same thing. I guess I see this
Say that again?
There's a fine for stop work.
Yes.
There's a fine for not working without a building permit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but you can have a building permit. A violation can be just
Right. So which is more significant, not having a building permit, or not, or stop work?
And not stop, because so it's the violation, because you get the stop work order, and then the violation would be continuing to work.
So you mean, just
If you start work without a building permit, don't have a life of building permit, I'm just gonna do and the building permit, and the building permit comes out and gives me a stop work. And that's the process, right?
Do they give you a stop worker, even if you don't have a building permit, or only?
Only if you don't.
Only?
Because DPW does
They would know.
I'm sorry? They have stop work order, do you anyway? Right. So, so it's with a building permit, doing something wrong.
Correct.
No building permit.
Yeah.
It's all their stop work.
Yeah, right. I think with the building permits, I agree that it's less naughty than this violating a stop work order. Because I, I just feel like people may not know that they need to get a building permit.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think there's a good chunk of people who just do it to, like, ask for forgiveness later, or maybe they don't do it. And then there's, I'm sure people who just don't know. But if a stop work, if you get a stop work order, you're given that, like, you know where you're supposed to stop. And you're doing something that rose to the level of either DPW or building safety, or whomever to actually So I agree that that's um, should have a stiffer penalty.
I would agree.
But that's at the discretion of, of a building department.
Whether they give the stop?
Or no, but like the the amount of the fine.
Well, we No, that's what we're, because our code doesn't have anything.
Right.
Blank.
Right, but it's up to an amount, right? Like, even like violations, like building department violations can be up to
It, it can be, oh, yes, I see what you said, yeah, because in the code it does say blank up to, or up to blank and imprisonment up up to blank.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, it would still be, that's true, so it would be up to that many things of that. So we would, instead of saying fifty bucks, we would say up to a thousand bucks.
Right, but it could be fifty, it could be under, it depends on how much they
Then you may not have to separate them, because departments would be able to, thank you.
I don't think a thousand dollars is sufficient to
I think it's I think it's We have a note. We got no number.
Not the city will say up to ten thousand dollars per incident. I believe the state, I believe the state has the num, like, sets that top number. I feel like I've seen, I was looking into something before. I feel like a thousand was the limit, because I was looking into something uh, regarding some tenant landlord issues, and like, how high could, you know, a fine go?
Um, so I do think violating a stop work order is wrong, because you also require a rest time, you think? Um, but while we're talking about sort of open-ended brackets in the code, in addition, one seventy-two dash sixteen one has a
Oh, I
you know?
Yeah.
Two sub-chapters above that.
It's just one?
It's one, yeah, it's one seventy-two dash sixteen A one.
A one, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so what I plan to do is go through each chapter, so notices, but I was going to
Yeah.
Please, last one, yeah. Search for
Yeah, this, there's, it's a state law that governs the thousand dollars. A state law specific to stop work, well, no, for violations that are not, like, for building department violations, so the building department does it say per incident, or is it just
Per day.
Per day.
But at least at the ceiling, we could we could set it lower.
Right, it's
But either, yeah, but either way, I mean, we could say up to eight hundred.
Instead of up to a thousand?
If we wanted to. But, um, either way, it should be in the core, yes. We shouldn't have the blank space, so. Okay, this sounds good, so I
So now we have a figure. Now we have a one thousand dollars that this state
So if it says up to, are you more comfortable with just leaving them all grouped together?
Yes.
And then it would be up to the department?
Up to the department?
Which is what they usually do in terms of the, you know, yeah, what's going on.
Feels to me like we're just passing on the work to them, um.
But they would know how egregious the mistake is. Okay, knowing if it's a repeat offender, right? You know, they would be able to, unless we want to add that, if you get, you know, the restraints
Right, the first
Of the, I actually think we did five for the department, but I'll bring language back, and we can play around with it.
Sure. Is there a way that we can pull the permit?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We, the council
Well, if you're gonna, yeah, they can pull.
So if you have, like, let's say, three occurrences, where you violated your um, stop work order, the permit can be pulled, and then you have to start from the beginning, you have the consent
Is that an accordion? I don't know if it's an accordion.
But if you're not you're not going to
Mm-hmm, they can pull.
They can pull.
Well, it's probably in the code then, we should double-check, because you can't just pull somebody's, they have, everybody always has to have due process, the ability.
Right.
So Yes, so do you want to pass one and two just to tidy up, or would you rather do all four in one thing, with bar tips, too, so all five?
I would suggest we do as many as we can not.
Okay, now we can move on, please.
We don't miss track.
We'll just chivalry it every meeting. Something to point it to. Those are the base?
Those are free, yeah.
Oh, no, there are much over here.
No, the one that I was
Yeah.
Oh, this is a, we're renting the clothes.
That's what I was sort of thinking too, but, yeah, so why don't you sign, we can't send it and follow that here?
Well, it'd be okay, it's good. I don't know why we started.
What, this is what?
Yeah, that one there, that's, that'd be okay.
Mm hmm. Right.
Well, with those courses, you should last.
He arrested, I don't know. He's probably innocent guy just walking in the street.
Probably broke a six thousand.
I don't, maybe he's going back, I don't know. But he was apparently. He was exonerated and he uh.
Wait, you want, wait, you want to see this?
So you had civil forfeiture, which is a crazy thing that's allowed in the United States.
It wasn't, he did, he got a bag, he got some, so the city followed.
Be what we should be done, but there are some places that don't really apply to.
In fancy cars.
You're not obligated to.
New York is a little stricter than other states, but like Florida.
Yeah.
Buying scoopers.
If that's, is an incentive to count police officers?
No, we, well, think of sort of. Yeah, it's called civil forfeiture.
I can't hear that.
What?
Just obviously, if you have any cash, it's ours.
I think they need to arrest, arrest you, right, because the whole suspicion that it's been used to come to uh.
Something listed out.
So.
Okay, so I just received the committee report, um, I read it. Local law of the common council to amend the city code to reflect the following changes. One, in chapter one dash three, remove keep following, whereas the title shall be in its entirety. Repeal of enactments not included in the code. And number two, in chapter one dash nine, remove supplementation, whereas the title shall be in its entirety. Sale of code book. I get a motion?
Oh.
But no. Any discussion? Any discussion? We're all to the races here.
This, that looks good.
Where if we use?
You like me, can do it how it's weird there.
That's because it's not doing it. Well, Barbara would be happy if we're starting with like.
There's always the parts.
Yeah, I spoke with her yesterday about.
This is.
Yeah.
Excellent. Here you go, man.
All right, so the first. Chapter ninety six, technically, you won that. We're gonna come back to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Who am I? And then one seventy two six.
Well, you, you could just, I'm just gonna write in, um, you don't have to like.
All right, I was just leaving.
I mean, be on your own notes.
Yeah, and I leave first.
I'm just gonna keep administrative code and that will just be on my notes and what.
Okay.
Kind of like. Home controllers update or housing initiative update, what they should do in their code.
Including, yeah.
Are we done?
Yeah. It's by law, it's supposed to be seven.
Probably okay.
I've been seven, sorry.
So they should say.
Yeah.
Just, there shall be a blind. Uh, as further ado. Let's talk.
You want a sport, can't.
I think it says pork.
Somebody's having, no, I think it is. Probably a little street that they created for their. For their.
It's a three year truck. It's only a reference, but they need to go within educational. Uh, mental trials during their three year trial.
All right, so I'll look at the whole thing in its entirety.
I sense you don't help get all of that.
The new peak. Has, no, that's.
Will do itself.
Kansas might supply something like peg on or something. But yeah.
New peak corporation.
All right, all right, so moving on to uh, chapter three ninety, so last month, we revised chapter. Um, three seventy six about the. Regarding the trucks and their weight, and we're, we decided on um, the definition.
Mm hmm.
So. This is where I actually got confused, so we need to revise it under three ninety as well. So under three seventy six, we were regulating the trucks. For no parking, so there would be no parking in residential neighborhoods between eight PM and seven AM. But then to revise that definition. Uh. In three ninety. It just seems like it's kind of redundant, because then you're not allowed to park them. So, uh, three seventy six, we revised last week, parking some five way. And now we're going to three ninety.
Right.
Yes, yes, but under three ninety, we're not allowing these to be parked at all. So yeah, in three seventy six, we're all love parking residential, so it seems.
You couldn't pick one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we should have picked.
Yeah, well, we were gonna pick one definition, but it seems like why, there are two different rules then.
Hmm. But but they could be one. Right. They the same thing or no?
Well, if we're gonna ban them. Why would we ban them in residential neighborhoods overnight if they're already banned everywhere in the city, on size?
Well, so trucks are banned everywhere in the city overnight, trucks of a certain size.
Yes, and then those same trucks of a certain size.
Being in residential areas as well.
Everywhere, anyway, yes.
It is for dozens of.
You're done.
Yeah, I thought it was, I was just like.
Do we wanna ban everywhere in the city?
Overnight.
Overnight.
I mean, personally, no.
No, I think.
Currently, they are banned everywhere, twenty four hours a day.
Oh, really? Right, that's the bad, I'll give you.
So that's the one we have to strike. But so, yeah, so that's why I'm seeing what.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I would, three ninety has a lot in it, and it gets um. There's areas that are parking is prohibited, areas where there's special parking, standing is prohibited, standing at certain times. Limited time parking, alternate side parking, angle parking, snow emergency zone parking. And handicap parking, I think that everyone should be going through this.
I think.
And cleaning up their ward.
Okay.
Because there's stuff, even when I look at this in Ward nine, it's, I don't even know that.
And what section is it, is that?
It's chapter three ninety.
Three ninety.
Parking, standing, stopping.
Because I've seen parking meters, I can't see where.
Really easy to find.
Yeah.
It looks a lot, it's a lot. I'm here, that's a rated. That should. Should be, yeah, for you.
I read, I do love it.
Yeah.
Induction.
Don't, don't sign it.
What is that?
It's dog, dog boarding.
Or, or anything? What?
It's the.
I just want to know.
Oh, with SBC.
It says fourth quarter, so it was. October through.
I mean, we talked about it after the meeting, right?
Okay.
Yeah, very fun end this.
What do you want to do in chapter three ninety, do you want to?
Okay.
And I thought I, I mean, I don't know that um, alcohol council, I guess they could. Look at this, I mean, there's like handicap parking in here.
So you want to tackle that first, because I was just thinking, should, so it's a kind of like more of an ethics code. It wouldn't be as detailed as that or as annoying as that, but this will might be something that like. Help people know when things apply and do it all.
Yeah.
But I like your idea of, because you know your ward, so you know if there's no ADA sign.
Yeah.
Just in front of that house anymore.
Like there's ADA language, go, like it goes back to ninety three, eighty seven, you know, just.
Mm hmm.
Lot of stuff right here.
So trying to see.
Really, I'll see that it gets reviewed every ten years.
That it gets what?
That we, that it gets reviewed for ten years?
So we're not talking about parking trucks?
Well, it's, it's a general, the whole. Chapter. Yeah, is um.
I mean, three ninety fifty seven A one, the area immediately behind City Hall on Gary and Drive, inside the cement wall. Should be using like survey definitions.
Well, see, also I think they were confronted.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not like, that's what Barbara is saying.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that like we take. This chapter and and do similar to the ethics board, if there's anything that's. Not ethics board, the ethics code chapter, um, so I guess. I'll be in touch with figuring out.
Okay.
Who can help with that and um. Yeah, instead of doing it to smell, I think it just has to all be done. It should probably be done three, yeah, I have a good follow, so I don't know if the, if there's anything pressing with the unattached.
With the unattached trailers?
Yeah, bec- I mean, because this will take a while.
Yes, the only place that I saw unattached trailer language was in relation to boats and like.
Boats?
Yeah, are those, I think.
I mean. Shouldn't have boats on our street.
But, but there's, so what was happening is in them getting complaints in midtown, it's certain stuff, famous there are. The attached trailers, like construction trailers. Um, and they're just left there and then people are going and getting tools out of them during the day and they're being parked. In places that are keeping, are having sidelined. Smaller side streets for.
I mean, I, I get the safety in terms of sight, but I also, you know, landscaping business, I don't want to.
We're not business.
Yeah, I don't want them down for the business.
Well, could we change, you know, if we want to get on my board, charging for parking at the Cardinal Street lot, can we designate that as a commercial parking zone overnight? Or you take your trailer. Um, real, I would assume that that trailer is getting attached in the morning and going out. On your. Your business.
The problem with that.
Is really overnight.
But the problem with that is, you think about when landscaping business is and when they're done. And, you know, that that's the parking lot for you past, and yeah, that's. So the timing of it is not ideal.
Something, actually now of the zoning code, um. The storage or parking and use of a trailer by any person is hereby limited. In all the districts.
So there's a huge inconsistency here.
Yeah, it's just so many.
I mean, it's, it is throughout the load.
Right.
All right, so here, storage and parking of one trailer on a residential lot, maybe for a, okay, that's a lot. Obviously.
So is everybody comfortable with just waiting on this?
Yeah, and then maybe. I think that's like the next, the next week, month, too, maybe it was gonna come next month.
Okay. So I'll put this on, do you want to do this one together?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I got chapter ninety six with Michael and chapter ninety, three ninety with.
But we should all be going to.
I would.
I'm just hoping it's okay.
That would definitely be helpful, it would be super helpful.
Is there a way to make this into like a doc that we can work on and workshop and like.
Yeah.
Putting everybody could add on, like put notes in.
Yeah, we could talk about how we could do that.
And I'd be happy to look in on the planning.
Or.
Too since. I get to watch some lessons on that.
Um, and speaking of that, we did leave an old business off. The noise ordinance, I didn't know if you guys had anything to.
Yeah, we met with um.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we met with Susan, uh, Susan Moncaz, and um. We made some recommendations to her, but she seemed to um. Favoring favor.
She was open.
Yeah, and so essentially what we're saying is that um. The noise, for the noise ordinance, um. Perhaps if we had a, a body. That consisted of someone from engineering, someone from.
From.
Landing and some.
From work.
From, so.
The ward where.
From the ward, right.
From the ward where.
Older person that would.
Construction is going.
Um, that would sort of sit down and determine if the, the waiver, the noise waiver made sense. Um, and so at, at, in that way, it would not be left to her, because she's inclined to. Um, give the, the waivers out there, as well as make the sound.
But I would also probably recommend, even though he might be mad at me and DPW, because with the construction. Him or Ryan, Ed or Ryan would, you know, in in terms of that group.
Because you're thinking of engineering, but DPW makes.
Well, or both, or both, yeah, I don't think that they would, they. They know the equipment, they know what needs to happen, I mean, they're, they both worked in the construction business.
That's true, okay, so.
Obviously, that's.
So instead of engineering.
Or, or plus, I don't know, but.
No, you know, okay, so what's the DPW?
Can they, people not tell my husband that I just work in my bank?
Does he not?
He definitely does not watch these.
So why haven't we been the guy?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
No, so she, she was open, and I think she was sort of. Welcomed the fact that there would be other people than herself, who would be making the decision, because. You know, it's, it's a big burden, you know, issuing these, so anyway, that was, that was productive, that. Both Cheryl and I said that we would get back to. Same research and other.
Now, would that be something that were legislated, or is that something that she would be doing internally with her own?
I don't think.
They are legal legislation.
No, this is not legislation, this is just.
Right, I, well, I know that, I just wasn't sure, because the, because I wasn't here last month, Paul was, oh, yeah.
That was just internally how they, how they process.
So we're making a suggestion.
Yes, but she is.
Oh.
And there may be some, what I was looking at also is what constitutes a domestic tool for people who are working on weekends, because I've had complaints about. You know, major construction, a house happening on a Saturday and Sunday and. You know, it's not a commercial project, but it's in a residential neighborhood and contractors are doing, like what are the. The tools that might be prohibited on a Sunday, something like that, so I've been doing a little research on what other communities are. Saying about, about what constitutes a domestic tool that can be used on the weekend. So that you're not, you know, if your neighbors are there and there's. Major work going on both days, is that something that?
You mean like construction, like they might have to have a building permit then?
Yes, but if it's, if it's domestic tools. That you're using, you don't need a building permit. If you're just doing work on your own inside, you know, you're just doing.
That's what I think is going with the leaf law, because the leaf law.
No, no, that's fine, no, it's just, right, what constitutes, somebody jackhammering. Right, what constantly is somebody jackhammering a, you know, on a weekend, for example.
Well, what if you don't want to pay a contractor to do it because you have the skills to do it yourself and you work a? Nine five. So I have to go jackhammer my.
Right.
Foundation.
On Saturday, yes, but you know, the idea is maybe there could be some, maybe there's one day off. You know, to give your neighbors a relief, I don't know, these are things, because I get these complaints, so that's why I brought it.
To sue and to tear up the property name.
No, no, I will say that, they're not project makers, we have people who are. Who are doing work they probably shouldn't be doing because there have been some stock orders issued. You know, so there are people who are doing. Things they should not be doing.
I just don't want to, I don't want the unintended consequences, because, you know, like, again, I'm talking about my husband a lot, because I haven't seen him today, so I miss him, so. But he's worked in the construction business, he obviously works a nine to five and is too tired, so if he were to do something around the house, it's gonna be.
Right, but I mean, the other thing is also maybe the hours, because people are starting at like seven in the morning, could it be that maybe on Sunday you start at, you know, nine instead of seven, you know, that kind of thing.
But then it also kind of turns into, it's like. Is this just a a neighbor issue, like be a better neighbor?
Right.
So.
Why is Sunday special?
Help your neighbor, you could have done a laundry.
What if we go? Pull up your own chainsaw.
I know, I mean, it wouldn't have to make laws if everybody behaved well, but there are some people who are. Who are not behaving well, and so the question is.
Finding balance.
Do we can find a balance, so anyway.
Yeah.
That's what I've been looking into and it's interesting, because different communities have different regulations. And maybe we don't need any, but I'm just doing the research to see. If there is anything that might be useful for us.
Yes, we'll stay tuned.
We'll stay tuned, there's no rush from this one either.
My douche code.
So I'm gonna have.
But then you got the snow warning.
But that's, yes, but those are definitely domestic tools, so there's no problem with that.
People use leaf blowers. To for the snow, too.
Really?
Yeah, it's. Some really more.
It's less than a inch, you could just.
That's right.
Heard the people.
Oh, really?
Very early.
So.
Next up, I'll call my older woman. That's right.
Um, there is. The section of the code, it does say domestic power tools operating or permitting. The operation of any mechanically powered saw, drill, sander, grinder, lawn or garden tool or similar device used outside. In residential areas between the hours of eight P M and eight A M. And the operation of any mechanically powered domestic snow removal device, including a snowbar, between the hours of ten P M and six A M so as. Pause a noise disturbance across residential property, so it sounds like there is something already in there.
Right, there is something in there, the question, right, so. If this could, is there a way to, could it be improved? Maybe not, maybe it's perfect the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see how we can regulate telling people what they can and can't do on their property during the day, like that could be. Yeah. Um. Yeah, as long as it doesn't exceed.
Those the decibels.
Yeah.
Well, the decibels, that's that's the key.
We had a conversation about that.
It doesn't also, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it just needs to be. And. Change out the language of noise disturbance across the residential property to putting it as decimals.
Give me the definition of what a noise disturbance is. Yeah, it couldn't, yes, it could be that.
Police running around for everything. Right. Did this.
I like to remind everyone that we live in a city. And.
Yes, we do.
But it's not. Yeah.
The fuck?
Yeah, so. It is, you're going all the ways.
You want to denning?
Yeah. Populations in the whole drink. Be a lot of other ones.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is uh ETPA. So I just want to thank everyone for all of their help, it would be. Public, the public hearing, which we had over two days um here at City Hall and. At the Kingston Library, uh, we had about ninety people give testimony. Um, Elisa has uploaded all of my notes from each day, um, it's available on tonight's agenda.
Mm hmm.
Um, she, I also put the signup sheets there of everyone that had signed up to speak, not everyone that ended up speaking. Uh, public comment is still open until the end of day, Monday, the twenty-fourth. So we can not take any action until public comment is closed.
Are we, is there one location where those are gonna like?
Elisa, what I want to ask, yeah.
Elisa, are you there? Elisa?
Yeah, it's for more payment.
Because it would be nice, because, yeah, they have been coming in, I'm actually looking at one great y'all that just sent to me.
So everything happens till, I would assume, five o'clock tonight. Is created in in one document on our on our checkbook under.
Yeah, I would love to have by the end of next Monday. Have one place for every comment that we perceive.
It will suck.
But soon.
Because otherwise we're going back and checking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be important to have. Yeah, especially as we, you know, end the public comment and we're starting deliberation, you should be able to access that and say, wait, when was that meeting and? Elisa, you there? Do you want to ask her later, do you want me?
Yeah, because I don't. Yeah, I don't see anything, like I know stuff came in today and. And yesterday that I'm not seeing in this link. As you jump up.
Yeah, I'm just looking at one.
Just hand. He just wrote it as a sign in sheet, right? That the comments.
No, tonight's agenda had uh the sheet had written comments, but not, there's, it's still not up to date. Of what's coming. Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Written, there's. Go to tonight.
One was assigned and then what was the?
Public guidance.
What was comments?
What?
Where is this?
I'm gonna ask someone.
It's the cell.
I think.
I just have people. Yeah, I know, yeah, that's why I looked it up.
Take it process.
Take it one.
So, yeah.
It was a funny matter.
Yeah.
If you remain alive, they take it.
Have you guys been getting comment, so sometimes my address is A shot or common council, one of those communities, so sometimes I get. Comments that are intended for everybody, which I always thought when I get those, but.
Yes.
Have you guys been getting comments just as for you as them?
I'm just totally curious.
No. Written comments, so say your constituent is reaching out to you as your alderman, I mean, if you do, I would ask them if. You could share it with the full council, because I think it would be good for the full council to be reading these. I tend to, unless it's, I could tell that it's definitely intended for the full council, if it's intended for me as president, then I will say, can I share this, because? Then it goes on the public record. But I think it would, if that happened, so it sounds like it's not happening.
I'm encouraged by me with the lobbyists for the. Lenders. I'm like, well, I'll ask him if it's.
Well, he sent in something, so I think that's going to be. Um. Probably on.
I've asked a whole question.
Comments.
Right, I've asked a couple of questions of. Outside of his comments.
Oh, pardon.
But you called us.
Um, I think I have the answers, I covered you with the question.
But that's right, question, but I didn't see any answers. Okay.
Oh. The answer is no.
But you have to put the.
Yeah, so we um. Ideally, we we need to vote on this by the end of the year or maybe year and give us enough time. To navigate around those votes.
The comments are still open till midnight.
Monday.
And until Monday of the tw-.
And and.
And twenty-fourth.
Yesterday.
No, 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 that's.
Next Monday.
We can't do anything tonight.
So.
Just gonna talk.
What we're thinking is. I mean, because laws and rules meeting is. We have a couple of, do you want to meet it?
Yeah, what are you?
Okay, so, um. When you call. A special meeting, which I don't think is gonna be possible before the next council meeting.
Right.
Or I still have to call a special common council meeting for December. For the.
The budget.
For the budget, in case there's a veto, most of the time I cancel it, so I just kind of pick a date and like, hey, guys, it's probably gonna be a day off. But.
Right.
We could do it where it's. After laws and rules. Um. On the seventeenth. So we could deliberate on the seventeenth. And then say have a council meeting on the eighteenth. Which I usually don't like a big decision.
Same type of a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, that's a break night meeting, the other thing that we could do is also. Call a special laws and rules meeting if we don't want to, so my problem is doing laws and rules Wednesday and then a special council meeting on Thursday. Is it's. It doesn't give you a lot of time to field calls from constituents, it doesn't give you a lot of time to think over, you know, what your colleagues talked about and what you heard. Um, that's. I like to give you all more time to process than that, um, so that would be my hesitation with that, so then we could also do a special laws and rules earlier. Like once we get the comments. After Thanksgiving, because that's the problem, like with Thanksgiving, the holidays coming hard.
So your goal is to have just done before the year.
Yeah, I think that's important, there, if people want to be spot like here, listening to everybody speak and.
They're into.
They, yeah, there's just a lot of tension and stress and we need to make up. Our minds.
Yeah, we don't want to carry into the new council, because there are gonna be other things that come up then, and we're the ones who've actually attended.
I will, I did, and I don't know if you noticed, but I did request that the new council members attend the public hearings and pay attention, because. Just in case.
Right.
We can't get this done, um, so there is a backup for that, but. Um. I I do think it's important for. People's sanity in terms of our constituents. To get this done.
Yeah, I'm I'm worried about waiting till laws and rules on the summer, so it's a change because it's somewhere a week before Christmas.
No, that's pretty late.
I. It's a veto or something like that. Then. When do we have to, you know, to be in a special meeting or?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to, like, it's not like the budget, because if we wait and, like, the problem with. The mayor vetoes the budget in December and we don't have the next meeting is January. We don't have a budget to start the year, so this isn't the same issue, but it does then hit the switching up councils and it does make you people wait. So if you guys are fine with. A special laws and rules meeting between now and the next.
What about?
Or four maybe?
Yes.
Laws and rules.
Can we do it? We have a bunch of rep on December first and then.
But that's when we have a budget wrap up.
What?
On Monday, December first.
No, we have about the twenty-fourth. Or with that next week.
Well, true.
No, but we also have it, we also have it, but that's the extra meeting.
Well, the twenty-first.
The twenty-fifth, yeah, that may or may not be here.
I think it may not, so. December first, we don't have a bunch of wrap ups, that's just a.
December first, yeah, I mean, it would be, our clocks would be discussing, but it would have already been voted on by the finance committee.
Okay. So we could do it on December first.
That's.
That was. No, this is.
Then we'll get you here.
That wouldn't get us our processing, I mean, this, I think this item is just too big.
Do you want to go for, you want to go on the second?
But that was, that was Michelle's suggestion.
So we'd have to be for that to talk about.
But I I think we should be, I think.
What about laws and rules?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, December third.
This is what I'm gonna do, if this is okay. I'm going to move, change the date of our regular laws and rules meeting.
On the seventeen.
Yeah, move it earlier, I don't know. I will let you know and I'll make sure it's obviously okay with Michelle and then we get a quorum.
We've switched.
Because otherwise we don't need to have two laws and rules meeting, we could just move everything and save you guys.
Yeah.
But this will give us a little time and then I'll call for the special, maybe I should include the special common council meeting on the seventeenth.
We could do this, special common.
That one's.
That's.
You can.
Yes.
Because most people would have that saved anyway, because it's a Wednesday.
Right.
Um.
That sounds, that sounds good.
So and then that will take care of this vote if it passes out of committee. And it would also save us. It would create the space to deal with the veto on the budget if that happens.
So so we just kind of. So seventeen will be E T P A Alu Pato.
Yes. I mean, I know, yeah, I mean, most likely E T P A if it passes out of.
Right, well, even worse.
All right. And then we'll figure out the. And do it for, yeah.
So there.
Yeah.
So now we just need a date for laws. Well, well, ETPA, so what time are we to get there? So on the seventeenth, we're doing both the budget and ETPA.
Right.
Well, the budget would only be if the mayor vetoes it.
Okay, so we can start at six thirty or seven thirty?
I was gonna do seven thirty, just because those are our normal meetings times and gives everybody a chance to eat dinner and then fit here.
Okay.
But hoping you won't have a veto.
Right.
Right.
So. And if we do, it's, it will likely be, you know.
When are you gonna do laws and rules?
Uh, Michelle, what do you want to do? Um, what dates work for you?
December fourth, so Thursday.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be on that.
Those couple of days.
So that, all right.
How about?
Following Thursday?
Well, ready will be there.
Eleven?
Oh, right.
Or is he off her winter break?
We could find out, or how about Monday the eighth? It could be Monday day.
But it's a little bit. Um, unless it's a. Like seven o'clock. Or maybe six thirty.
And that would be.
I could do that.
Let people say what minutes? The eight and what potential laws?
Seven instead of six thirty.
Yeah, because it could be a potentially long meeting and that way we have more time to.
Will be long.
You know.
So is that what everybody wants to do? So we have a forum here, we could share here, we could just.
Seven o'clock.
Seven P M.
You, now, somebody's gonna send out a D M.
I will, I'll officially call and call.
Seven.
Um, but I remember you could do the special council meeting, right, so we have a forum, but I probably will still just make sure, out of respect for our colleagues, to make sure that they can make that. And then we would not have laws and rules on the seventeenth. Why? Because that would be replaced.
But we don't, we don't council, so we don't get off, right?
Correct, I don't like to give you guys too much time off.
So, um is there any outstanding information anyone feels that they need from the building department, from BARTC, from anybody else that we've not received, or? I think we have a lot of information, because, yeah, I've looked at actually, I think I've looked at all of it that I've, that I have so far. So it's, it's, yeah, there's a lot of information.
Yeah, I've learned that, uh no one has made an appeal to raise a, a ETPA bill.
Right. Their D H C R.
True, I'm used to it.
Wouldn't it be possible to list the procedures for the land to, um, to approach D H C R to get an, an increase? Maybe they don't know.
They know, they have been registered, they have ongoing contact with the H C R.
Most of them, yeah, I separated them, but that would.
They all have to have their regist, their buildings registered yearly, and, um each apartment has to be registered, so they have
Right.
ways to get to.
But is there, is there anything in writing that they could be?
Well, the city won't do that, it has to come from the H C R.
I mean, we have called on the H C R to open an office here, if you can assist both landlords.
Is there one that they can?
No.
No.
No, there's no downstate one, maybe. No, there's no upstate one. I mean. Yes.
White Plains is the upstate.
Okay. What makes it yours, if you want it?
Yeah, about the.
No, about the old.
Oh, yeah, Elisa?
Yep.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to check, because I've got, I received some more public comments yesterday and today, so I don't know if you're putting everything somewhere else too, or, uh, in addition to what the link that we, you put up yesterday for tonight?
Um, what I sent you today, what I put up today is what I have so far, did you send me other stuff?
I didn't send anything, I think you were copied on them, so.
And also, other question, Elisa, is, so our, the public comment goes in through Monday of next week. Is there a way that we could, that you could, um get all, like, I know you put stuff on the agenda for tonight and on other meetings too, but can those all be gathered into one location?
Yes, um, I have everything on tonight's meeting.
All right, so then, how about all the com, if you get more comments, I'm assuming you will, from tonight to Monday, would they go on tonight's agenda?
I can put it wherever you want me to put it, you tell me what works for you, and I'll put it there.
Because there's no central repository that all of these documents exist in.
So let's, we're gonna put it on the next laws and rules meeting agenda, and we'll put all the comments that we've received so far. Or by the end of Monday, all the comments received will go on the next laws and rules, because that's when our deliberation.
And when will that be posted, so we will know to be able to go in there and see all the comments?
That's an Elisa question.
You, I can post it at the end of, well, if they're through Monday, I'll post it on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, and is this the regularly scheduled laws and rules, I hear you're, you're talking about.
Thank you, uh, I'm gonna send out an email later, we're gonna move our laws and rules meeting to Monday the eighth. But I'll send an email, so you don't have to.
And Michelle, if you see, if you notice any that I'm missing, please forward it to me, but I'll go back through, like, I, I, everything should be in there.
Okay, I will go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
So this is only one quarter, it'd be, right, four times that.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, that's, that's.
Oh, fifty, okay.
So if we have further questions as we keep reading the comments and whatnot, can we so we have further questions on ETPI, as we're reading the comments as they come in, or we have to hear from constituents, can we maybe reach out to Michelle with those questions, so that if there's anybody we need to contact before the next meeting, we can make that happen?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Then you'll.
So we have questions, seven, Michelle.
Yeah.
And then I just voluntarily told her, that was chair, that's. Because it happens.
Good.
That, in that way.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
In that way, instead of waiting, do you have a question, instead of waiting in for a meeting, and then we're all like, you know. Perhaps there's a way to get some of these answers.
And you received, um, BARTC's last email?
Yeah.
About, yeah, and we should actually, Elisa?
With his intern?
Yeah, do you have, Elisa, do you have the information from BARTC for, that the intern put together, we should probably post that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I asked you this before, while we were talking about the intern's work, how did you interpret that, because it was outside of the period?
I, I interpret it as just that our rental market is mass confusion and chaos, and, uh I, I, it doesn't seem like even having landlords don't even list all their apartments at all, like, at any time, I, I just don't understand what's going on, honestly.
It was interesting information. Well.
That's all, yeah, that's all I looked at it too. Just another snapshot of.
Right, but it was so far, it was after May.
Right.
And yes, I, I don't know, I, I was just confused by it, first I saw it in one light, and then in thinking about it, it was like that I really don't, I don't know what to do. Well, what, what it does for the actual, um, study itself. Or what does it suggest?
Yeah, or you're an independent of the study, just different pitching information. You know, it should be discussed in a special meeting.
Yes.
That's the deliberation part that we need to do.
Mm-hmm. So we can ask these questions when we get to that meeting. So hold on to them.
No, I'm just.
Well, it's only a discussion, we could talk, but it's just in a lot of, we're obviously, we can't make a decision because we're still getting written comments, like, but I think it is okay to.
Sure.
I, I mean, I, it's just, it's sort of like it's information, is it accurate even still, it doesn't, it doesn't mean it's even accurate, I mean, we know of other information where there were vacancies and then they didn't get listed till October, right, like. I think you're right, it's just a little snapshot of what was happening at that, what was seen at that particular time. And then a different snapshot, or two months after that, or two months before, they're, all of these are just